I kind of envision this being done on a single-page form prepared by the city that will be good for four months and reregistration will be done every four months for free. So, it'll state the dates and the nature of the event, the location of the event or events, and the estimated duration of the event or events. Each registration shall be subject to a $25 administrative fee and reregistration shall be processed at no additional cost. So, that $25 is to capture administrative time. As part of the registration, the registrants are going to agree to indemnify, hold harmless the city from any claims that arise as a result of their humanitarian service ordinances, events. So, the last iteration had a requirement of $1 million insurance and a $250 deposit. Both were scrapped. If everything is accounted for, registration will be granted and that proof of registration will be submitted to city administration in the police department. Service events won't be permitted on any other publicly-owned or controlled property except for the park where it's allowed or has been registered for. The events can only last up to four hours at a time and do not include reasonable setup and tear-down time. They're going to be -- so, these events are going to be subject to the same rules as it pertains to portable structures. So, that means that they're going to have to fit within the buffers that are established. And that also means that if there are events in Riverside Park that are east of Sixth Street, that no portable structures will be permitted at all. And finally, registrants -- so, the last bullet point basically outlines that registrants are going to have to follow this code or any other chapter in the municipal code. And if they don't, it may result in a park exclusion by way of citation. So, the denial, revocation, and appeal section provides for due process through a hearings officer. They have five business days from a denial or revocation to make an appeal. It'll be heard within 10 days by a hearings officer and the hearing officer's decision will be final. And the ordinance doesn't apply to farmers markets, commercial events, or private property. Okay, finally, as part of holding these events, these nonprofits, private persons, or other organizations are required to collect data that outlines this behind me. So, that's the number of individuals served, the number of supplies or items dispersed, including food items, the number of individuals who've been placed from city parks or publicly-owned property into transitional semi-permanent or permanent housing, and any other relevant data consented to be collected by individuals served by humanitarian services events to be used by the registrants. So, that means if there's any other information that's freely given or consented to be shared, they're able to collect that data and they'll submit it to you. That said, anybody who's doing these humanitarian service events will report at least twice a year detailing all of that information. And so, the information gathered won't be used as a pretext for a criminal investigation. It'll comply with HIPAA. And the last part's kind of redundant because I just now realized that it's in the first paragraph, but they submit it twice a year. And it'll be reported in aggregated and anonymous manner to protect the identities of the individuals. Call to action is at your discretion, with the date also at your discretion, with potential motions up there. And with that, I turn it over to you.
Dwayne has some questions.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Augustus, I'm not sure if you know this answer, but there's two proposals for two navigation centers popping up in the city here. Have you had any talks with Mint or any of them? I know Mint's one of the ones that -- will they stop using the park for navigation when they open up these two navigation centers?
My inclination is that they're not going to stop having services in the parks.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, I have a question.
Go ahead, Rob.
Augustus, on page 59 of the packet, registration procedure for humanitarian blah, 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 section D, it says that the proof of registration shall be submitted to the city administration and the police department. I don't understand. That seems really redundant to me. I would assume that the city administration can be trusted to, you know, communicate with the police department, you know, via computer. And I don't understand why someone would have to register both with the administration and the police department. It seems redundant. What's the disadvantage of taking out one of them?
Oh, I mean, yeah, I can see what you're saying there, Counselor. I think that that was only included just to provide for ease of access of information for police. Maybe they're out in the field and it's just easier for them to have that information on hand. That's something that can be amended. It was agreed to by the other parties when we were discussing the ordinance, but I can see your perspective. It really is just for ease of access of information. It's the police who are going to be out in the parks, you know, policing. So, that was kind of my thought behind that.
It just seemed to me to be the onus on the entity, meaning the city, it would seem like the city administration can easily forward all that information to the appropriate place in the police department where they can then act at it. Anyway, that was one thing that I --
Like I said, I appreciate that perspective and that's perfectly -- if that's something that council wants to change, that's perfectly all right. Like I said, it was put in there initially for ease of information.
Thank you.
DJ.
A few questions. So, they have this registration process. Now, are they required to notify when and where and what they'll be doing?
So, section B of 5.58050, "The application shall be submitted on a form provided by the city that states the nature of the event, the locations, and the duration of the event."
By event, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then, is that public information too? Can -- will the public be able to access that to know when those services and whatnot are coming?
Yes, it will be publicly available.
Okay. And then, just briefly about a hearing officer, how do you imagine that to be going if and when the event that a hearing officer is necessary?
So, it would be kind of -- it would be an administrative procedure, kind of like what we do with our park exclusions.
Okay, sure.
So, you'd contract with a hearings officer. They'd have -- you'd present your side and then they'd present their side and be able to cross-examine. It'd be a very brief form.
Sure, that's fine, yeah. Like, just like park exclusions. That's -- I understand. Thank you.
Other questions? Brian?
Yeah, thank you. I wanted clarification on the definition of humanitarian service event. It's fairly clear in the language, but I guess I have a specific example. You know, if you just have some regular citizen that has, you know, a few coats that they are going to get rid of and they, you know, instead of taking them to Goodwill, they're like, "Oh, I'll take them down to the park." Is that considered -- it's certainly a private person. Is that considered a planned, organized, promoted, or advertised event? Like, would that person need to go through this whole process?
No, it's not designed for that, for that individual who doesn't -- say, it has to be planned. The operative terms in that definition are planned, organized, promoted, or advertised by private parties. So, if somebody decided, "Okay, I have three coats in my closet that I don't want to wear anymore. I'll take them down to the park," this ordinance is not designed to cover that.
Okay, so, the threshold then is, it has to be -- can you describe kind of what the threshold is?
Yeah, so, the threshold is an organized event. And so, and it would also be like a non-social gathering. So, the difference between a social gathering and a non-social gathering is that for a social gathering, you're coming together for not really any specific purpose, whereas a non-social gathering, you're coming together to fulfill a certain purpose. So, this, for example, this meeting, all of us here, this is a non-social gathering. And so, what the threshold would be is that it's an event that's organized, that people know what's going to happen. It happens weekly or it happens bi-weekly. So, that's really what it comes down to is organization.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that clarification. And then, I just had a follow-up question on the hearing officer. Does the city manager make the decision on who the hearings officer is?
We'll probably treat it the way that we did with the park exclusion city manager -- with the park exclusion hearings officer. We'll probably bring you a list of qualified people and have council go through it.
Okay, thank you.
Joel.
So, my question was similar to Brian's. I was thinking, sometimes I go down there with a pot of coffee and just talk to people and listen to them. I don't organize it. I show up maybe once every three months. And it's whoever there grabs a donut and a cup of coffee. And I'm just -- it's just me or I may take a member of the council with me just so we understand what's going on. Would that meet your threshold?
That is not contemplated by this ordinance. So, again, the threshold is having it be planned, organized, and, you know, done so frequently that people know that it's happening.
Yeah, I hear you. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Vanessa.
This might be a question for council, maybe a question for you. Under data collection, I was curious, number two, collecting the number of individual food items that are dispersed? Not understanding how that would benefit the city.
So, we kind of went back and forth on the data collection because I had gaps in my knowledge about what they actually could collect. I think that the spirit behind that, when we were kind of talking this through, was to give the city an idea of just how much these people are giving out, how much these organizations are giving out. Essentially, in a way, it helps capture how many people are being serviced. And so, they viewed that as something to be able to point to and say, "Okay, this event, we average 100 people and therefore, we're there once a week, we're helping 400 people, we're giving out 400 meals or 400 items that are helpful for the homeless per month." And then, that would be information that they could point to to show the efficacy of these events that they're having. So, that was kind of the discussion behind that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Augustus. We'll open up to the -- okay, one more question, Joel.
Sorry, Augustus, it's getting late. So, I understand then that the nonprofits that you worked with are okay with what you put down here.
I have an email from Mint explicitly saying that they're okay with the ordinance as written.
Okay. No more questions at the moment. We're going to open this up for public comment, so please state your name and let us know whether or not you live in the city.
Hi, David Dapper. I live in the city. I would ask that you would please -- Tussing Park isn't equipped to put up -- we sent you -- some of us sent you some pictures of the garbage that was left at the park afterwards and they just took it over. I mean, and they're coming down the street overwhelming our neighborhood. I pray you'll keep in mind some areas that are just not equipped for this. I mean, they had racks full of clothes and then just trails of garbage the next day. We're just not equipped for it. And also, the Riverside Terrace condos, they set up, what's effectively Riverside East, they set up right out underneath their balconies and we're doing this. And these people, this is -- they should go over to Riverside West where they, you know, where they are and do it there, not in these people's front yard. And better yet, it would help them all if there was one place that they could go and people could stay there, say a lot on Agnes, that the state would like us to use, where they can be serviced and not searched all over town to reach people with medical issues that may not be able to, you know, get to them. Anyway, please keep maybe that in mind as a solution besides our parks.
My name is Julie Hartford and I'm a resident of Grants Pass. I'm here tonight to deliver a message from PATH, Partners Assisting the Homeless. We would like to thank the city staff for reaching out to us, Mint, the HIV Alliance, and other relevant stakeholders when developing and modifying these ordinances. I know city staff has put a lot of time and consideration into crafting something that is effective and yet fair to all. As always, PATH is committed to working with the city, the police department, and local community groups who are implementing positive and sustainable solutions to help people transition from homelessness to a self-sufficient future in Josephine Gowney. We believe that by working together in cooperation and collaboration, we can find and implement solutions that will make positive impacts to benefit all in our community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sandy Rourke. I live in Grants Pass. There's a couple things with the humanitarian events that will be happening in the park. I'm hoping we can put something in there where they have to clean up where they go to, not just leave the mess. That would be nice. And also, I have a question too about -- I should have asked earlier, but it's late. I'm really tired. But about the utility fee, where we're like bouncing back from like 12 to 7:25, I'm sure we're basing that on kind of how many people and businesses are here now, but there's a lot of people moving and there's a lot of businesses moving too. So, when we -- if we do lose more, are we going to -- will that price be increased to meet the 3,000 -- I'm sorry, 3.2 million or the 4.8 million? I'm kind of curious about that too. But, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Del Aldridge, City. I want to apologize a little angry earlier. I had a couple experiences today I didn't really enjoy with the homeless, so apologize for being angry earlier. I have to say, this was the best presentation I've seen of all night. You worked really hard on this thing because we're really tired of seeing the trash piles everywhere right after an event. At least the people on Sundays that have that lunch there, they do a really job cleaning it up. And, you know, people like that, I have no problem with, but it's ones who just dump, bring trailers full of stuff that the next day are in the trash in all the parks and spread between the parks when they have to move every three days. So, good job. And I apologize for earlier. I was pretty angry. And I know you guys are doing the best you can, but there's no solution to this whole thing. It needs a lot of work. Thanks.
Any further comment? All right, a closed public comment and Dwayne wanted to talk.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to -- I'm definitely going to vote for this and I'm hoping that they'll clean up because I, you know, I have a lot of constituents that complain about the trash and stuff. And I feel for them, but I just had to make a statement that, you know, we were told last year, if we had a navigation place, that we wouldn't have to use the parks, you know, or as much as the parks. And now, we have two navigation centers going in the city, one in the north end of town and now one by Bymart. And, you know, Augustus stated that, well, they're still going to do this in the parks. I'm kind of disappointed in that part. I know they have a right to do it, but people are, you know, being affected by this and it's not an easy solution. And I just hope that we can move some of the stuff away from the residences, if possible, and make it easier on them. That's all I got to say.
Joel.
Hello, this is Rob.
Go ahead, Rob.
A few things. Just briefly responding to what Dwayne just said, my understanding was that a year ago, when we were talking about navigation centers would diminish the need for these kinds of services in the parks, at that time and the year before that, we were talking about a navigation center that was essentially part and parcel to either an urban campground or a shelter, essentially one location where you knew where you could find the people, et cetera. I don't know that it was ever stated that if we had a navigation center exclusive of a campground or a shelter, that that was really going to be that much of a solution to the problems in the park. So, that's just to clarify, that's my memory. But, you know, I appreciate that this time around Mint was consulted and was back and forth with our city attorney. I'd like to look out for them just a little bit more. There's a couple things here. I mentioned before, I thought the duplication of effort that we're asking them to both submit to the city administration and the police department, I think one of those should be chosen. But, the other thing that is a little more concerning is with regards to a hearing officer's decision being final, while I totally support that in the case of essentially a simple park exclusion, I think that pretty much the facts presented by the police officers in those situations are probably pretty much black and white. And there may be some debate. I think it's pretty simple and it essentially affects, you know, one or maybe two people in each instance. But, as far as the hearing officer's decision being final for one of the, potentially the groups that are trying, it could be an individual or the groups that are trying to help service the people in the parks, that could be a much bigger matter because we have First Amendment rights embedded in that, embedded in that discussion. We also have a situation where if a hearings officer who's a non-elected official, and quite frankly, our current hearings officer was recommended by a city attorney, I don't know that any of the councilors ever met them or we ever interviewed them, it's someone that we don't really know very much about. But, to have that person have final say over something that involves potentially First Amendment rights, to me, is potentially problematic. And I would think that if somebody's next step, if they felt that they didn't receive a just outcome from a hearings officer, the next step would be a lawsuit if there was no other way for them to appeal. I believe in that particular scenario, the council should be -- that hearings officer opinion in that particular case should be appealable to the city council. I don't think that it would happen very often, if at all. I don't think that it would be particularly time-consuming because the presentation would have already been made to a hearings officer. The hearings officer would have all their ducks in a row and could easily present that to the council. But, I think that it could potentially become a policy decision. Now, Augustus has tried to work through everything that he -- that is foreseeable, but the bottom line is this is new. And not everything is always foreseeable. So, to me, I could see a hearings officer making a decision. I think the final arbiter in that situation, I think, based the final responsibility on that rests with the council. And I'd like to see that changed where the hearings officer's decision may be appealed to the city council. Those are two changes I'd like to see in the audience. Thank you.
All right. And I think Joel was next.
Well, I was going to make a motion incorporating one of Rob's changes. Rob, I didn't get your second change. The first change was where the council would be -- they could appeal it to the council from the hearing officer. What was the second change that you wanted?
Do you hear me? Can you hear me, Joel?
Yeah, go ahead. You're kind of muffled and my hearing aids don't help. Go ahead. Did we lose you?
Okay, so, the second change was that the hearings officer could be -- decision in this case could be appealed to the city council. And the other one was that the group who had to register for one of their events would be -- they would submit their application or information to the city administration and the city administration would then forward that to the police department or vice versa. But, it seems to me the city administration should probably be where that application goes and then it is forwarded to the appropriate people in the police department.
Is there something from city staff that would say that that second suggestion wouldn't work?
No. Well, a few things. As far as the proof of registration going to both city administration and the police department, I don't really care about that. You guys can decide to just have it go to one or the other. The registrant isn't going to be responsible for that. That's going to be submitted by community development, who's going to be the one processing these applications. As far as the hearings officer, the hearings officer is going to be a lawyer and then you're going to have the effect of potentially appealing a lawyer's decision to council who are not lawyers. And so, you're going to have the city council making a legal determination which can still be appealed via lawsuit. So, that doesn't make too much sense to me. If council would still like to go that route, we can definitely go that route. It just doesn't exactly track for me because our hearings officer procedure for park exclusions, for example, where I kind of borrowed this language, the hearings officer, their decision's final. And that also has an option to go to council. So, if you'd like to do it where it can go to either council or the hearings officer, you guys could have it work that way or you could have it go to the hearings officer and have it be final. But, it doesn't really make too sense to have a compulsory process where the city council is a governing body is second-guessing a lawyer's determination unless you guys pick the lawyer. And if you're the -- and when it came to Ms. Ferguson, who ended up being retained as hearings officer for park exclusions, you did meet her and she did come to a workshop. There's no reason that couldn't be done for hearings officer for these. But, I do question the rationale of having the city council making a legal determination after one's been made by a hearings officer who is a trained lawyer.
So, Augustus, this is Joel or Rob. I kind of share what you're saying because I don't think any of us are versed on constitutional law and court precedence and what is going to be a subject-to-law lawsuit, illegal. I would have to -- and I've taken constitutional law as a course, but looking at that, I mean, that's a far cry from saying I'm a constitutional law expert. So, I don't know, Rob, if that makes sense or not. And it might be better just to have the lawyers do that.
Can you still hear me, Joel?
Yes. Go ahead.
So, to me, actually, I would pretty much completely disagree with what Augustus just said because the city council takes the advisement of our lawyer at virtually every meeting on many issues. It then is the ultimate responsibility of the council to decide, right? The city attorney never decides anything for us or shouldn't. He advises, he gives us whatever precedent he feels is appropriate, and then the council decides. To me, it should be the same way here and a trained lawyer will make it that much easier for the council. I wouldn't want it to be either or because I wouldn't want to, as a counselor, have to wade through a wide body of evidence. But, I think once that's been filtered by an attorney, they can present the case to the council in a way that is easy for us to understand and then we would have to take responsibility for whatever action, whether it is following the lawyer's advice, which we would do most of the time, or not following it for some reason the council feels is valid. But, the lawyer, the hearings officer would advise us, would collect the facts, would advise us, and then the council has to take responsibility. And that's the way I look at it. And it's the same way with every other piece of advice that the lawyer ever gives us, that any lawyer gives us. We always, the council always makes the decision.
I think that that might make more sense if the city attorney or the city manager were picking the hearings officer. I think in this case, because the city council would be picking the attorney or picking the hearings officer, that doesn't exactly track still. That said, it's entirely possible to make it happen where council is the final arbiter. It's just, it's my opinion, however, that the city council, who are not trained legal professionals, second-guessing trained lawyers, who's going to be, for all intents and purposes, much more well-versed on the First Amendment, it kind of seems weird. But, if that's how the governing body wants to go, we will make that happen.
I'm going to make a suggestion.
Well, and a perfect example, another example is the hearings officer that we currently have.
It's almost midnight.
You know, we was picked by the council, but yes, I don't know that we ever met him or interviewed him. He essentially was chosen by the city attorney and we just --
You met her in a workshop. You met her in a workshop.
Okay. I'm going to make a suggestion. We need to either table this item or -- and have it discussed at a further date. It is 11:30 at night and we have a couple items on the agenda. We just need to move on. So, council, can you either please, somebody make a motion to either approve this or table it for another day if you want to make changes to it? DJ?
I move to approve as submitted.
Is there a second? Seconded by Valerie? All right. Discussion on the motion? Joel?
I know it's late. So, the one thing, you know, having experienced us being a judicial body with the previous case that came before us, I know it was, we were a little out of our ballpark. The mayor did a fine job and I think we did justice, but it was, we didn't really have the experience or expertise to answer that. have the experience or expertise to answer that. I could go either way. So I'll go ahead and vote for DJ's motion.
Okay, the motion was to adopt the ordinance. Further discussion? All right, DJ, you made the motion. How do you vote?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Brian?
No.
Vanessa?
No.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Rob?
No.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Motion passes five to three.
An ordinance of the council of the city of Grants Pass, creating Grants Pass Municipal Code, Chapter 5.58, Regulation of Humanitarian Service Events on Publicly Owned Property.
Thank you, and that was not a unanimous vote, so we will have the second reading of a further date. Public comment is next up on the agenda. We have a few people who have stuck with us all night. Jay Meredith is on the phone. Go ahead, Jay.
Good evening, Jay Meredith. I'm on a roll tonight, so I'll take my final two minutes and thanks again for your patience and allowing phone comment. I just want to talk with financial forecasting in general, just really quickly. I am resting easy and I think you all should rest easy because you have filled the general fund financial gap for the next, at least the next one to two years. There's now some time to be, to be thoughtful about what comes next. I think the council should really consider getting back to, next year, getting back to annual, annual strategic planning. I think there's a lot to be said for going through that process, even if you may not have the financial resources that, that would normally be allocated during that process. I think, I think you should work, do whatever it takes to start the hiring process on those new police and firefighters as soon as possible because that process takes some time. Please understand that any, you know, what I'm, the reason I'm so passionate about this topic is, is I, I wanted to see the city solve this issue in, in the least controversial way that gets public safety the help that they need because I know our police and fire need it. And that's at the bottom line of why you've been hearing from me a lot lately. So thanks again and, and I appreciate, I appreciate you hanging in there, hanging in there late and I very much, very much look forward to continued discussions on this public safety topic. But just know that if expenses keep increasing at a rate greater than revenues, there is no permanent solution. But I think that the voters have said over and over again with these strong levy renewals that that is the main permanent solution.
Jay, the red light's going off. All right, thank you.
Thanks again. Have a good night.
Was there anyone else who was wanting to speak during public comment tonight? Nope, we've said it all. Okay, we'll close public comment and review emails.
So there was one suggesting funding options for public safety, 11 against the sales tax or food and beverage tax, five emails supporting the food and beverage tax and utility fee, four expressing concern about the proposed UCAN location, one suggesting developing a five-year action plan, one titled homeless funding, first responder funding, and two concerned with the homeless crisis.
Thank you. Next up is our consent agenda. These are items of such routine nature without controversy, they may be approved with a single action. And council president, would you please read the consent agenda?
Item A, resolution consenting to Mark, Mark Almu as temporary city attorney. Item B, motion acknowledging the receipt of the monthly and quarterly financial reports for quarter ended June 2023, which is starred. Item C, motion approving the minutes of city council meeting of February 7, 2024. Item D, motion acknowledging the minutes of the historical buildings and sites commission meeting of January 11, 2024. Item E, motion acknowledging the minutes of the parks advisory committee meeting of January 11, 2024. And lastly, item F, motion acknowledging the minutes of the tourism advisory committee meeting of January 2, 2024.
Thank you.
Do you have a starred item on there, Rob?
Oh, okay.
Or else I would have made a motion.
Oh, okay. We're going to do this starred item real quick on the financial report.
Start that timer, Karen.
Sorry, I'm going to go try and go fast, everybody, if we hit close to midnight. But please feel free to stop me if there's something that you want me to further explain. So tonight, I'm going to go over to the summary of the fiscal year 23 financial report that is now audited. We have some budget, we had a budget adjustment. I'm going to go over the revenue and expenditure highlights and then the ending fund balances. And then this is towards leadership of one of the council's goals. So we had one supplemental budget and on June 7, 2023. I'm not going to read all of the individual ones. We've already gone over this via resolution, but we did make one adjustment, Resolution 2373 for one. And this is a continuation of that. Some of our revenue highlights, taxes, property taxes, a little bit over, over budget, franchise and other fees over budget as well. Other revenues, license and permits, we are above and the license and permit had to do with building outforming its expectations by about $189,000. The fees and charges for service are from city utilities, meaning the utility rates went up larger than they anticipated for the COLA. And interest, we budgeted about $110,000 in the general fund and we end up with about $440,000 in interest with the change in our investment advisor contract. And then your transfers in are going to be down about $296,000 and that has to do with transient lodging tax. So as a comparison of the last four years, here are the revenues in the general fund and you can see we leveled off a little bit, if not decrease in '22 and we jumped back up a little bit in 2023. Property taxes over the last four years, you can kind of see it's, there's not a lot of growth there. The percent of property taxes collected through quarter four, if you have large swings in the percent collected, then you can kind of see where the economy is going. In 2021, you had low interest rates and low inflation and so you had a lot of people potentially selling property that had liens on them, which is why that collection rate is over 100%, meaning that the city actually got more than property taxes built through the county in that current year. Building can sometimes be the canary in the coal mine, so you can kind of see the volatility over the last four years. There is a large $100,000 permit in 2023, so it is probably closer as far as the climate to 2022 than 2021. As far as the revenue highlights for the utility funds, the street utility was at 107% and that is because the gas tax, actually, that with the increase in gas rates or per gallon rates, that is about 5% over. And so our typical street utility rates is about 102%. And I want to point out the water, yes, was at 81% as far as what was budgeted, but that is due to $3.5 million that was potentially going to be given from the URA directly to water. And so that's why I put in parentheses, we're closer to 108 with the COLA and the water rates. And then another fund of note is looking at the lodging tax. We only collected 89% of what we budgeted, which is quite a big decrease. And this is the water revenues over the last four, four years. As you can see, that's kind of a typical normal pace. Jason and I are watching this closely as a large treatment plant and making sure that everything is normal as far as consumption. Here is the transient lodging tax of the last four years. 2022 is the bump in rate, but you can see 2023 is going down and part of the projection and already pulling some of these numbers together, 2024 is going to go down again. This is important because 48.33% of these revenues go to the general fund and 22% of the total transient lodging tax goes to public safety. So as these decrease, the revenues to public safety potentially decrease as well. So as part of the, the expenditure highlights, this is June 2022. Yes, we did have $2.5 million in savings in 2022. You could see some of the lower percentages of budget spends in, in parks and recreation, planning, economic development downtown. They're going to be somewhat low. In 2023, we had hiring of the urban forester, our park superintendent, our economic development manager. So you're going to see some of these numbers change and you'll notice that the police and fire savings are about 94, 95%. That is going to switch here in 2023. So total savings potentially of $2.5 to $2 million. And that is just necessarily, or that's underspending the current budget. In 2023, fire, I put an asterisk next to their percentage, they put about $350,000 into the SAFER grant. They did not receive the SAFER grant in 2023, so in removing those revenues and the expenditures that they didn't have, they were closer to 96. And you can see that the gap as far as what everybody is spending in their budget is, is shrinking, which is why we're looking at forecasting and maybe this being potentially And here's the look at general fund expenditures over the last four years and you can see the notable increase from 2022 to 2023. And here's public safety over the last four years. 2023 did see less vacancies. We're hopeful that we can fill those in 2024. We do have some vacancies creeping up on us in 2024. Community development, as kind of I stated earlier, the reasons why some of their costs are so low are going through the COVID times, as well as there are some major vacancies in some of these positions, which in some of these departments, they're really smaller budgets in comparison to public safety. And so adding a person at certain valued areas definitely changes the amount of money that they spend in any given year. Here are, is a reminder of the June 30, 2022 fund balances. I want you to keep an eye on the 44% on the general fund and then you'll see that some more yellows creep in here as far as being right at policy or target, which we're going to have to handle here in the next budget cycle. There is mention of everybody talking about 42% in the general fund. We had 44% the year before, which alluded to us cutting the, the fund balance policy from 30 to 28 to meet with our current expenditures. So 42%, I know it sounds like this astonishing number, but if revenues are not keeping pace, we're going to use all that, if not more. I do want to note that there is about a $500,000 payment that we will be doing as a supplemental budget in 2024. That was one of the auditor review items as far as we have a debt service payment due on July 5th. We issued that check to make sure that we are not late to meet our covenants of the debt service. And so potentially you could say that our ending fund balance is about a half a million dollars less than this $15 million showing for the general fund. And that 500,000 is about 1.5%. And then as a part of the consent agenda, there's a motion acknowledging the receipt of the monthly and quarterly financial report for June 2023. Are there any questions that I can answer? And hopefully that didn't put everybody to sleep.
Valerie?
Yeah, I'll try to pick this quick, but we talked about vacancies and it's come to my attention that we no longer have a grant writer. So is that a position that we're holding as not filling?
So that's my department. I am currently holding that position open or was with no public safety funding. We were going to look at citywide cuts through the next budget cycle and that potentially was going to be one of the FTE that would come up on, on the chopping block due to my department charges the general fund to operate.
So you're saying because we did do something that that's not going to be on the chopping block? I mean, that we will or won't? And I just say that because I know how much of our money comes through grants and that's kind of a scary position to not have filled.
All right, it is part of the plan to potentially look at that, maybe reclassify it, change some of the job duties. We have other needs in finance. Financial projections are becoming more and more readily needed and in multiple areas as well as accounting, financial reporting, there's some other things. I understand that grants are a great thing, but we also do have some other needs that I'll have to make a decision of as to filling that. A grants administrator or a grants specialist is not a common position in the state of Oregon. I think there's only two or three and I think the city of Albany is trying to get one and they are having issues as far as having to go back out and re, what do you call it, re-advertise for the position that, that I've seen. I've been keeping an eye because they asked me about our position.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Okay, go, Rob.
Yeah, JC, maybe, maybe not tonight, you're probably not prepared tonight, but it's late. But for the transient lodging tax and also there was one other slide and I can't remember which one it was. It'd be helpful if you went back to 18 or 19 because in 2021, we had COVID, then pent up demand, COVID restrictions were released, so '22 had a big spike and then we came down some, you know, in '23 and maybe again in '24. But I'd like to know how '23 and '24 are compared to, say, pre-COVID, to know if actually we have a serious trend that we really got to be concerned with or we just had essentially a big spike at the end of COVID. So to show those figures that, you know, 18 and 19, and there was at least one other slide that that would apply to as well. And maybe, maybe, you know, you can supply that in email at some point in the future.
No, I could definitely try and maybe give you a longer view as far as the transient lodging tax. The problem is, is you're comparing apples to oranges because of the rate change in there as well. And so it may not be a like for like as far as looking at them stacked up as far as the revenues from year to year between 18 and 19 and 23.
I was just going to add, I think on March 4th is when we have the DMO coming, Tori coming to give a presentation and she is pretty aware of the trends across the state too. So I think we'll get some of that information on March 4th.
It'd be great to see that from 18, pre-COVID also, like two years pre-COVID and maybe we can tell her that. Yeah, thank you.
Consent agenda, motion please?
I move to approve.
Seconded by Valerie. We don't discuss the consent agenda, so Vanessa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
DJ?
Yes.
Val?
Yes, and thank you, JC.
Brian?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
And Dwayne?
Yes.
All right, motion passes eight to zero. Are there any items from mayor, mayor council comments tonight? Nope. Okay, how about staff comments?
Yes, I would just like to thank Augustus for choosing Grants Pass. It's been an absolute pleasure and to have someone with his, his professional skills and knowledge of law and practice and we've grown quite a bit in that field and your support has been invaluable. So I greatly appreciate it. It was wonderful to be able to work with you.
Likewise, Aaron. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Augustus. We did our best to make your final meeting with us here memorable, so hopefully succeeded or maybe you choose to forget. Any further comments from staff? No? Valerie?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at 11:49.
And seconded by Rick. All in favor of adjourning tonight, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
I think the audience even voted on that one. Good night, everyone.